Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 25th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting, and ask that if you have pagers, cell phones, or other electronic devices, if you would turn those off or silence them at this time, we would certainly appreciate that. If you are not the applicant, and you wish to address us on a case, and you haven't already done so, these sign-up sheets are available to you, they're on the table outside the chambers. If you'd complete one and hand it in to our staff, we'd be happy to hear you. And with that, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th. Do you have approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes, cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Continuances, Russell?
We have one uncontested request for continuance today, that's item 34, PC 10340, request to continue until May the 9th.
Did anyone come to address us on that item today? We have a motion and second to approve the continuance, cast your votes, and that's approved.
We have multiple new requests for continuance. Item 11 has been withdrawn. Item 14, which is SPUD 706, is to be continued until May the 23rd. All the rest of the items I'm going to read are all continued until May the 9th. So those are item 16, SPUD 710, item 19, PUD 1486, item 22, C 6451, item 23, PUD 1488, item 24, C 6443, item 27, PUD 1489, item 28, C 6445, item 29, PC 10342, item 30, C 6456, item 31, PUD 1492, and item 32, C 6454.
That was a long list, if you can remember what was read. Did anyone come to address us on any of the items that were just listed by Russell?
Who are the additional continuants?
Okay.
There's a new request for continuance.
Well, I was going to ask for additions from the public once we've voted on these. So we have a motion and a second to approve the continuances, as read, cast your votes, and that's approved. Now, Eric, continuance request from the public.
Items 26 and 27, I'd strike that, items 25 and 26. My name's Eric Rose. For the record, I'm an attorney, represent protestants in PUD 1480 and the accompanying plat. The staff, as I understand it, has suggested to the commission that a continuation of this would be in order, and I'm going to ask my colleague, Ami Swank, to give you the chronology of what's happened up until now. There's some very unusual procedures that have occurred in terms of late filings of things, and I think it would not be orderly to have this heard today. Two weeks from now, it could be heard, but I'll let Ami explain to you what happened in terms of the applicant and the filings that they've made at the last minute.
My name's Ami Swank, I'm an attorney with Rose &amp; Associates. My understanding of what has occurred is we had a, I'm sorry, Mr. Box had a plat and a master design statement on file. There were some revisions that were made to it. The plat that was revised was filed on April the 5th. The master design statement, however, was not filed on April the 5th. It's my understanding that the staff had called and requested the design statement, the revised design statement, so that it would match up to the revised plat. They didn't get a response back on Wednesday before the packets were to go out. It's my further understanding that staff called Mr. Box's office and advised them that it was going to be postponed because they never had a design statement that matched the plat. He came over that day, made some modifications to the design statement. And so you have a design statement and a plat that's been filed, but it's not the design statement and the plat that the staff has had time to review and is in your packets. So as the protestants, I have a packet that you all have that has a plat and a design statement that's been reviewed, but is not the design statement or the plat that the applicant has advised us that they're wanting to be put forward. So that plat and design statement has not been reviewed by the staff. And so I've got a whole bunch of questions in my head in terms of what controls. You've got two things that are now on file. When you file a revised, does it take away the other one? But the one that's in your packet is not the one that was revised. I'm not trying to confuse everybody, it's just, it's a very odd situation, and I would just request on behalf of the protestants that it be put off for two weeks so we can have it reviewed by staff, have it on record correctly, and go forward from there.
Did they send you a copy of the plat that they wish to go forward with now? I mean...
Yes.
When did you get that? I got mine Tuesday, so I mean, if that answers your...
Yeah.
Think that's right.
I'm going to apologize, I'm terrible with dates. I know I am going to say he filed it on the 5th. I believe, believe David, you sent it to me on the 6th or 7th as far as the revised plat, and we've met with them a couple of times. As far as the revised master design plan, I had not seen that until this week, and I want to say Tuesday, and I got one from the staff. I asked them to send it to me so I knew what was actually in front of the staff today. Everything that I have is a apparent version of a working copy. Now, I'm assuming David did that so I could see what was pulled in and what was taken out, but as far as a final copy that I assume would be submitted, I have not seen.
Thank you. Did you also get a revised traffic impact study?
There is not a revised traffic impact study, to my knowledge, that's been done.
An amended, because that's what it says in this, the recommendation for a deferral by the staff is not just to review the PUD, but the amended traffic impact analysis.
Well, and I agree with that completely, because the access to Blackwelder has been removed, so all the traffic from the addition will be flowing on to Western.
That's true, yeah.
And just from quickly looking at the revised design study, I'm sure it's a typo, but that's why I think it's so important that we wait and we get a design study that everybody has agreed on, that in there it indicates that there will be only one entry on to Western for the, I believe, Track 4, which is the R1, and in fact, there's three. And it's just a quick typo that I noticed, but, and that's just from looking at it very briefly. I'm concerned about going forward on something that was so last-minute, and especially with the staff not having any chance at all to look at it. I mean, the staff does a great job, they're very responsive, but getting something Wednesday at 4:00 and expecting it to go out and be able to have all the various departments look at it, it's impossible. And I, the staff does a great job, and to have an applicant to be able to walk across the street, mark it up, and then want it to be heard without the staff being able to look at it, I think really downplays the importance of the staff and the comments they make on things. I may not always agree with them, but I respect what they do, and I think they ought to be allowed to do their jobs and given proper time to be able to do their jobs.
Thank you. David, before you respond, Mr. Teague, anything? You've been another party to this, so if you have any comment on hearing it or continuing it?
My interest is more in the plat side, and I came to the city and got a copy of the plat, so I know what's there. So I don't have a comment one way or the other.
Thank you. Okay.
David Kennedy, on behalf of various protestants, I don't think this is going to end up in a negotiated settlement, so it's probably really going to have to be something that you decide, and what you were sent last Friday is not really the application that they have on file now. So my personal opinion is that it probably would be helpful to everybody to see what's really on file, have the staff evaluate it, and then have the hearing in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Box?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The timing of the events, April 5th, the revised plat was submitted to staff, and that revision did a couple of things. One, it deleted the access on to Blackwelder, which is the Western Most Street, and because of that, that generated a need to revise the traffic study. This traffic study was submitted to staff on April 8th. So both of those things happened, and at the same time, I was in trial the week of April the 8th, so I did not get around to revising the design statement. The only changes made to the design statement, and Ms. Swank is correct, what I sent her was a redlined version, so she could see what we took out. We deleted the multifamily tract, that was Track 5. So when you look at the revisions, and when staff looks at the revisions, all we did was take out Track 5, which means there were certain acreages that had to be placed elsewhere. Nothing was added, no substantive changes were made. That was done some eight days ago. So I understand it was last-minute, but the plat itself was done April 5th, and the traffic study was done April 8th. So I find no reason why staff didn't have enough time to review that. And as I said, the design statement, literally all we did was take out the track that is no longer there and incorporate the correct acreages. No substantive changes were made to the design statement. And I think it's also important to note that the previous version of the plat staff did review, recommended approval, and the only issues they had, there were two unfavorables. One, the access to Blackwelder, which has now been taken out, and two, a billboard, which has also been taken out. So staff has reviewed a more intense plat, recommended approval. We've now taken out both issues that they had with it. So we think that this application is ready to be heard and see no reason to continue it. We had a lengthy meeting with the attorneys for the protesters last Friday, discussed the plat that we wish this commission to review today. So the protestants and their attorneys have had ample time and notice to review what we are asking for approval from today.
Any questions of Mr. Box, or?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that there was a meeting...
Yes, sir.
And then there was items that were discussed...
Yes, sir.
And items that were agreed on by both parties, and now they've come back and said, hey, we want to change it. Is that, did I misunderstand that?
We had a lengthy meeting last Friday. It involved the, let me get an exhibit.
The question is, are we going to hear this or not?
Yeah.
I think not. If the staff is recommending deferral so that they have the opportunity to review it, then I think, you know, that's all I really need to hear about that. So I'm going to move to continue it.
I'll say that I respectfully disagree, but, you know, I've just won, so I'm ready to hear this, it's been continued enough, the revisions that were made were exactly as described, I'm ready to hear it.
I think I have to agree with you.
Well, I agree with Janice. I'm not ready to hear it at all, because I not only have questions about what I read in the packet that I got, and that has to do particularly with the C-3 section in this thing, it's all blank. I can't vote on this thing favorably right now. I would prefer a continuance so that all parties, including respect for the staff's opinion and the staff's workload, whatever it may be, one would think, okay, you should do your job, but I think that they do a lot, and I think out of respect for the staff, a two-week continuance isn't going to kill anybody. So that's my opinion.
Well, we have two different opinions, we need someone to make a motion, so...
I did make a motion.
Oh, do we? I missed it. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Janice's motion is to continue this item for two weeks. Cast your votes. It's continued. Thank you.
As a question of instruction here, I mean, I'm somewhat bemused by the fact, me being a practitioner in the legal arts, that I have, count the lawyers, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, sitting out here, they had a meeting last Friday, and they still can't agree on what they had, what they did last Friday at this meeting. It's kind of amazing. But let's hope we at least know that we have the proper application when we come back, that all the revisions are there, and that we can hear this thing. I'm counting six separate times this thing's been set for hearing. The plat has been set for hearing six times, this 25th and 26th. I mean, this is, I would trust that the expertise could at least say, this is the application that we wish to move forward. If you can't agree on anything else, let's at least agree on that.
We do agree on that, and that is what was filed April 5th. So there's not a confusion among us, it may have a difference of opinion, but we all know what the plat is that is filed and is before this commission, but we'll go talk about that in two weeks.
I need to respond to that. I do not want the commission to have any confusion or misunderstanding about what Ami Swank and I did in the representation of our clients. Particularly, I'm hopeful Commissioner Allen, you understand that, we did not make a deal that we walked away from. I don't know whether that was the implication of your question or not, but we don't have a deal. And I want Ami to tell you exactly what happened last Friday. She's been handling this, not me, and I don't want any commissioner or any staff member to think that we did anything that was improper in terms of negotiations or changing our mind, so please tell them exactly what happened last Friday.
Wait, that's not true. I don't need, we don't need any information.
Okay, okay.
I just want to be clear...
That's fine, I just don't want the commission to think that, I don't want Mr. Box to suggest or the commission to think that we did anything that was out of line, that's all.
I'm waiting to hear what happens next, in two weeks. Commissioner Dale.
Mr. Chairman, I voted to continue this while, frankly, I would much have preferred to hear it. I voted to continue it because of the technicality that we ask for things to be filed a week before, whether it's a minor revision or not. With all the contention with this case, I think it's just probably procedurally better to continue it. I heard Mr. Kennedy speak, and what I got from that is, we've met, we've negotiated, we've pounded on the table, we're not going to get any closer. That's frankly why I would have preferred to hear it, and I agree with Mr. Ellers on Technically, I've got to say, Wednesday before a packet Friday, not the time to file things. That said, in two weeks, this deal needs to go. It needs to go up or down.
Right. Okay. Moving right along, are there any other continuous requests from the public today?
Excuse me, that's number 25 and 26 being continued.
They were continued.
Yeah, that's what I said, both of them.
Yes. Consent docket?
All right, we have five items on the consent docket today. The first three are street closings, item 1, CE 851, item 2, CE 853, and item 3, CE 847. Items 4 and 5 are final plats, C 6450 is item 4, and C 6458 are item 5.
Anyone come to talk to us today about the consent docket items 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5? Gave a motion and second to approve the consent docket, cast your votes, and it is approved.
Item 6, this is items requiring separate vote, is DA 23746, an application by the Carlin Group for consideration of a lot split deed at 1919 Northwest 142nd Street and Ward 8.
Is the applicant here? No one has signed up, commissioners, and we do have a variance to TE 1. Move the variance. Second. I have a motion and second to approve the variance, cast your votes, and that's approved. Move the application. Second. A motion and second to approve item 1, or 6, excuse me, cast your votes, and you're approved, sir.
Thank you. Item 7 is SPUD 713, application by Daryl Ross Slate, the rezoned 12309 South Mae from O2 and AE2 to SPUD 713, Ward 5.
Is the applicant here? Just tell us briefly what you're going to do, if you would, please. Give us your name and address.
Daryl Slate, you need my address?
Yes.
12620 South Jasper Avenue, Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
This is a current facility that has been vacant for about 10 years. Me and one of my partners are wanting to open an indoor training facility for youth, indoor batting cages and athletic agility training. No changes really need to be made to the building, it's just been vacant, and we would like to move forward with the zoning to be able to accommodate that.
Okay, no one signed up, commissioners?
I just had a question, and as I was looking at the section on signage, there's a lot of control over signage, which I agree with and applaud, but I don't see where it actually tells me how many signs are allowed. It says, you know, all freestanding signs shall be, but it doesn't say how many that might encompass.
There is currently a erected brick signage already existing in front of this property facing southwestern. There would be no additional signage except for on the front of the building, just a small banner, you know, just to make sure that everybody knows that this business is there.
Well, I would really like to have that notation included.
With the packet, there's pictures of that signs.
And I did see that.
Okay.
I have just one question. I note that we have this church use, but you're not associated with the church, is that?
No, sir, we just did not want to rezone the whole thing. The church wants to exist. There is a daycare also, that we don't want to incur anything that they do.
Okay, so it's just your particular...
It's just this particular building, but because of, there's parking that are joined that we would share, we would have to take care of the whole deal. We would never, our business hours and our church hours are totally separate, so it wouldn't, we're able to share the parking lot.
Understood. I just didn't get the tie there, thanks a lot.
So we can add a TE that says the existing sign remains and will be the only sign on the site. So that'll be TE number 2. I've moved approval with the additional technical evaluation, TE number 2. We have a motion and a second to approve item 7 as amended, cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Item 8 is PC 10343, an application by Frélin de Lyon, the rezoned 1321, 1347, Northwest 1st Street, and 216 North McKinley, from R3 Medium Density Residential to I2 Moderate Industrial in Ward 6.
Hi.
If you'd pull that down so we can hear you, or stand on a...
Sure.
On a phone book. Give us your name and address, please.
My name's Kayla Baker, PO Box 892837, Oklahoma City. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. It's actually supposed to be R1, we changed it, and it's not supposed to be R2.
So you want to change it to I2?
I'm sorry, I1 instead of I2.
Okay, good, yes, I knew the staff asked for that, that's very good. No one signed up, commissioners?
With that amended application, changing the application from I2 to I1, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve number 8, amended to I1, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9 is ABC 783, an application by James Clay Burke for an ABC 2 at 2416 Northwest 23rd Street, Ward 2.
Hello, my name is Clay Burke, and I'm representing 2416 Northwestern Avenue, Oklahoma And you are establishing a restaurant, and you... Yes, sir. You want to have alcohol, is that your request? Janice, Ward 2.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about this application. I, you and I have not had a chance to visit, and I'm sorry about that, but the building that's on the site is dilapidated, are you planning to demolish it and build something new, and do you have renderings?
Yes, we do. Well, I have a site plan, and my architect, Dave Ledbetter, is working with me on that. I'd like to kind of see what I can do with the location before I kind of like get into it. The building has great bones, but it's in bad shape, and it has been for decades, and it's been operated without a license for many years. We couldn't even find a license. It's a wonderful location, and I really just want to beautify that corner, it has so much potential. My neighbors are wonderful, you know, the church and I have, you know, the, a few of the other neighbors with the outreach ministry and the environmental people, it just, it's going to be brought up one of these days, and I'm here, and I want to do it.
Would it cause you a great deal of heartache if we continued this item for two weeks, so that you and I could get together and you could kind of show me what it is you're planning on this corner?
I would love to.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I'm going to move that this item be continued for two weeks.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This has been a restaurant, quote, bar, for years, is that right? Is this an existing restaurant?
It was at one time, but it's been sitting empty for a long, long time.
This is back way in the day, way in the day, and it was a really lovely little place to go and eat, and I liked it. I thought it was totally compatible with surrounds, et cetera, and it was, I think, I'm not sure what kind of food it was, but it was really, really good. But it's a decaying, it's a decaying structure, and as long as it's been a restaurant, it's been there. It's like, this isn't something he's, you know, adding to the thing, he's making this thing better. I would support it now, but if you want to wait a couple of weeks, I defer to you, and if you're okay with that.
I would really like to do that, because I, it's been sitting empty for so long, I'm not sure that the idea of it as a continuing use really is applicable or makes sense, but I'm willing to be convinced.
Well...
I'm willing to be convinced.
I liked the place. Do you ever go there? Many years ago, many years ago.
Me too, so...
I move we continue the...
At least four of us have eaten there, Janice, just so you know.
Lovely, okay.
Can I please share with you, just enlighten?
You know, I think rather than do that around the horseshoe, if you've got two weeks, let's fake them.
Okay.
Okay?
Nick?
I think it is appropriate, they're in agreement, let's get it continued, get it worked out. One of the things we need to work out is on our staff report, it's not 2416 Northwest 23rd Street.
Right.
That's down by Villa. This is back at Western, and it's 24th Street.
Right.
And I agree with you, Bob, we used to eat during the day, too, and it was...
I wish I still had the sausage recipe, because as I understand, it was a Knicks, and they had lines around the block. And I still, when I tell people, hey, I'm transforming this corner, people are like, I used to go there, my grandmother used to go there.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a second, and let's continue, item 9.
Successful.
Cast your votes. You're continued, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is SP 457, application by David Stanley for a special permit to operate an auto sales dealership at 339 West I240 Service Road, Ward 5.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. We have a case for our zoning is right, but as you all know, auto sales requires a special permit. Staff has recommended approval, and we would ask for the same.
What kind of a sign are we going to get, David?
We don't have the exact sign yet, but I can tell you we have around 300 feet of frontage, so we don't have the ability to have the maximum sign that the code would allow.
It's a very suitable place for... It's a very suitable place for an auto dealership that's in the area.
Move for approval, David.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 10, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 has been withdrawn, item 12 is PUD 1491, application by Life Church TV to rezone 9211 North Broadway Extension from PUD 921 to PUD 1491, Ward seven.
Good afternoon, Barry Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Also in attendance is Mark Allen with Life Church, if we need to direct any questions to him as we're discussing the item. This was on the agenda two weeks ago, and had a, I think we had three issues that were brought up by the planning commission members for, that they wanted us to look at. I did meet with Commissioner Powers earlier this week, she had requested through the staff that we get together and look at some of the revisions that we had made and discussed with staff. And so I thought just go through the changes that we've made so that you guys are aware of the things that, what we actually have changed. The three issues that were brought up at the meeting a couple of weeks ago were, one, I think Chairman Yocle brought up the, the sea of parking, tried to break that up some. The signage was brought up on, trying to nail that down a little bit tighter, and then Commissioner Powers had the question about screening and buffer between the, the tracks and the commercial, the residential area. So what we have done, just to refresh your memories a little bit, I did bring the, what the previous site plan looked like, and, which we had, the, the building was pushed as far back to the, to the west as it could go against the residential area. We had parking that was along the, the frontage road, had a kind of a bypass driveway that kept the traffic away from the front entrance and went over to the other parking areas. Our revisions now that are, and they, they've been denoted in the, the staff report as well. I did make a colored copy so that it'll look a little bit, this looks a little bit prettier, can kind of tell what we're doing with all of it. We've moved the building farther to the east to get it a little bit closer to the, to the right-of-way, but we still wanted to maintain the front entrance of the building next to the frontage road. If we brought the building any, any farther to the east, then we wind up with the, we'd have to flip the building and put the entrance on the, on the backside, which is gonna have all of the traffic closer to the residential area, which I think wasn't gonna be desirable. We did eliminate the row of parking that was adjacent to the frontage road, we took out the bypass driveway, and what we've done, and then, and then we actually, also, there was a row of parking along this north end. We took those items, we didn't take them out completely, we relocated that, so that we moved more of the parking to the south end that's gonna be adjacent to the commercial, and put, and some row of parking on the west that will probably primarily be used for staff during the church meetings. The other thing that we did in addressing the issues for screening, the PUD does call for a six to eight foot site-proof screen between these tracks and the residential. Site-proof screen will be up at the property line, which is gonna be on the high side of the property. The location where the, where the building is, the high point in the property is pretty much through the area where the building is, so in order to have access to the building and have it compatible with the drives and the frontage road, that will, that will be excavated, so that the, the building will be closer to the elevation of the frontage road than it will be to the location of, or the elevation of the residential development to the west. That combined with the site-proof screen, it gives us a, probably the best screening that we can get to screen the building from the residential. At least we, we depress that another probably six to seven feet, I think is what the, the cut will wind up being there. We have also, in the, in the PUD, it specifies a 10-foot buffer around the perimeter of the site. The original site layout had that 10-foot buffer between our driveway and the residential. We have now increased that through the majority where it's next to the building, we have, it's about a 30 to 35-foot buffer, and then on the north parking area, it goes down to about 25 to 27 feet, so we have increased that as well. And the areas that we have colored in green on the, on this drawing will all be landscape areas. We've got the islands that are in the middle of the parking, and so roughly every seven or eight parking spaces, we have a landscape island. So those are the, those are the revisions that we've made. I think in your packet, there was also a copy of the signs that are proposed. We do have it in here so that it would be limited to essentially one sign per tract. We have it broken up into the three tracks, one for each of the commercial areas and then one for the church. The sign that they had proposed for the church is the one that they have used at the, the other campus locations around Oklahoma City area and really in the other locations in other cities and states, as they've done as well. Staff didn't have any unfavorable considerations, they've recommended approval. The other thing that was in there was the TE to remove the personal storage, and we have no issue with that, we'll, we'll take that out.
Nick?
Your, your underlying zoning for all three tracks is O2 and C3.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the church use itself doesn't need to be C3.
Right.
How much C3 do you want in here, and where do you want it? I assume on both ends?
Both ends, and, and it would be really, the way that I think it's envisioned at this point, it's probably be more of an office-type development, but the, the way that we actually, this was put together was, it's kind of a modification of that PUD 921 that was done six or seven years ago that had this, this same zoning, and essentially, we haven't, we're not modifying any of that. The reason we've come back with the new PUD is that in that previous PUD, the low-impact neighborhood institutional, which is what the church is gonna fall under, was specifically excluded from being allowed in that PUD. So we've kept, we, we kept most of the parameters that were set in that previous PUD, and so it would be on each end, but, and there is a, there is a piece of this that is included in PUD 921 that is not included in this part of it, so it, it retains that zoning, that's the piece that's down on the far south end.
Well, but the three tracks you have, and the track to the south is a pretty good-sized track.
Yes.
And you're not, you're not showing us anything on what that C3 is going to look like. And I'm, I'm somewhat troubled with that. The church itself in the middle, no problem. I think I understand what you're doing there, but I, I have no idea of really what's gonna be on either end. The north end, it's fairly small.
Right.
But that south end is significant, and, and you, we don't know what that's gonna look like, I guess.
You know, we, we don't know 100% exactly what's gonna look like either, we've tried to come up with what the conceptual development will be there, and you should have that in your, in your packet as well.
Yes, we do.
That has that, the layout that actually, we've, conceptually, we've, we've looked at most of that as being an office development.
Well, I do-
We do have a large, commercial warehouse-type facility that we have shown.
Okay, I'm not trying to speak for you, so correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but when I looked at the rendering we have, it looks like on that south track, roughly 50% of it is made up by, by the pond.
Yeah, plus or minus, yes, sir.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to stretch you to say it's 50%, but a substantial portion of it's the pond.
Yes.
I'm assuming that stays.
Yes.
You can confirm that, that, okay.
Yes, that, yeah, that pond is gonna stay in its configuration, it may be cleaned up a little bit, but we're not gonna fill it in.
That makes it much more suitable for office than it does retail, because-
Exactly.
The pond is sitting out in front, I mean, it takes the frontage, basically.
Yes. And, and with our conceptual layout, that's really kind of what we had in mind with that, is that it would probably lay out as, as office, but again, that was kind of the, the zoning that was in place with the previous PUD, and, and we were trying to do this with as minimal changes to that PUD as possible.
And that gives me the comfort, frankly, that I was looking for, that they're not going to try to reclaim that pond.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, the pond, I agree, I like the pond staying. Any other discussion? JJ?
One more thing, a tool that you have this time that you didn't have with the previous PUD is a specific plan, so-
Yeah.
Well, I have to say, Nick, that was my question, too, because I don't know what's gonna happen, particularly on the south end, the north end has smaller places, but I'm curious why it is that the PUD that you presented, that 1491, didn't designate what uses were going to be in those two spots, rather than just a repetition of an old PUD, that I don't know if what was deleted, what was allowed, where O2 was, where C3 was, does C3 allow large gasoline stations? I mean, the, I mean, I don't know. You see what I mean?
I, I do, but I, we, we don't allow large gasoline stations, I think that's one of the, one of the items that, I don't, I don't believe it was in the previous PUD, the, the original PUD didn't specify particular uses for any of the tracks either. It was-
Just C3, O2?
Yes, sir. And, and that's, again, that's really why we left it as it was, just to make as few changes as we could, that, I was gonna flip over here to the-
If the church goes away, and this is flat C3O2, to do whatever you want to do with it, I mean, that's, that's my, that's my real concern. And the other question I have is, is this the sign, you're gonna have two of these?
Yes, those would be the signs that would be on the-
On both ends.
Commercial, on, on each end.
And then the church's sign in the middle?
Yeah, the church's sign will be in the middle, do you not, did you not have a copy of the church's sign in your packet?
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah, it's there.
Yeah, the church's sign would be probably somewhere around that driveway that comes in, in front of the building, in, in that location, it would be kind of what we'd-
Well, I'm, the, just, I mean, I, I don't like the height of them, I don't know if you need that, 20 feet and 25, whatever it is, I think, I think it could be smaller, particularly where this is and what the elevation is of the, of the land. If you could just wrap that down five feet, I'd be a happy guy.
On the ones on the commercial?
Those two sides.
Those two sides. I don't have any issue with that, Mark said in the thumbs up, so yes, we could, we can take those down on, on the-
Down to, say, 15 feet.
Yes, sir.
On those two sides, and then leave your big one up, but I, but I still can't get over the-
On the uses, to your point, is so, two is restricted to these uses, is that right?
Pardon?
If I'm looking at the, my staff report, section 7.2, where it refers to section 7.2, it says additional use and development regulations, so these uses are the uses then for track two, as you say.
Right.
But not necess, then, three, I'm not saying I object, I just want to be clear about what I'm, what we're, we're looking at. Then one, and, sorry, Barry, three, then are straight C3, O2.
Right.
Right?
Uh-huh.
So we have restrictions on the middle track, no restrictions on the end tracks.
I, I think our intent with this is that, that the, these uses that are listed in this section of the PUD apply to the entire PUD, not just the track two.
Ah, well, that's, that's-
And we, and we'd be, we can stipulate that in the, in the PUD, but these are the uses that would be allowed.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes a little more sense, that way we get, we're not, we're gonna, but one thing, we got conformance up and down the whole of the track.
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that is the intent, whether, we, we weren't trying to go with any kind of straight zoning on those two end tracks, it was gonna all comply with the same zoning.
Okay, good.
And does this require a specific plan to come back before you do the permits there?
Yes, that is in the PUD that is specified for a specific plan.
Okay. That's a little clearer to me.
Well, no one has signed up, Barry, thanks for working with us on the issues that we did raise a couple of weeks ago and addressing them.
Sure.
Motion? Move, approve?
I'll take that, say I don't have it.
Okay.
And I do want to thank Mr. Lodge, too. Both James and I were a little surprised to find out this property was in Ward seven. I thought it was in Ward two, so did he, and he knew he was not going to be in town to meet with Mr. Lodge, so, and I, I did think that he, that he did a very responsive job of, of addressing the issues that we raised, specifically with him, so I thank him both for his time and for that effort. So I would move approval of PUD 1491 with the additional TE two, that the signs for the tracks, the commercial tracks, we don't want to say it that way now, but the-
Tracks one and three.
Tracks one and three are limited to 15 feet in height, and that the use limitations that are listed in section 7.2 shall apply to the whole PUD and not just to track two.
Correct.
And with those changes, I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 12 as conditioned, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 13 is C6449, this is a final plat of Sarah Plantation in Ward one.
Hi, Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants, 150 Deer Creek Road, Edmond, representing the applicant. We're in agreement with all the TEs, and we'll get the comments addressed, recommended by staff. If there are any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to address those at this time.
We have variances to TEs three and four, and no one has signed up.
I had just one question about the sewer, what, what are we doing for sewers here? Why, why are we doing aerobic sewers, is that right?
That's correct. Sewer isn't available to the site, there is sewer to the south and to the north, but there, the sewer is too shallow to get into it.
So as I looked at the staff report, it says it's within one-half mile of the proposed development, right? Is within one-half mile, but it's not, is it?
I believe that it is, yes, but it is too shallow to gravity flow.
I see, that was not clear from the, from the report to be, so maybe I misunderstood that. Okay.
And you're taking your lot sizes down to a half acre?
Yes, .52 acres, there is one, one-acre lot, lot number one is one.
Yeah, but one on the end is large, but the, I'm more concerned about the small ones with the aerobic.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the street standards, you wanted a variance on those also?
That's correct, the streets in the area are rural standard streets with no curb and gutter, ditches on the sides, and so we're just maintaining those street standards, we'd like to.
And what are the other people in the area with these rural streets doing for their sewer service?
They're also on aerobic systems, I believe.
On real septic system?
Septic systems, yes, sir.
Not aerobic system?
Yes.
And that's the problem I have with the small lot aerobic system, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with them.
Well, I don't know that I necessarily am, too, but I don't, I don't see a great hue and cry from people that have expertise in-
Well, the other point I'll make on, on this particular application is we're talking about seven lots.
Yeah.
We're not talking about a-
Right.
An urban development here, we're only talking about seven lots.
In an area that's got septic generally, yeah. Any other questions?
Two variances.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move the variance to TE number three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE three, cast your votes, that's approved.
Move variance TE four.
Again, motion to approve the variance to TE four, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Move the application.
And approve the application, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 has been continued until May the 23rd. Item 15 is C6453, a preliminary plat of Camden Business Park One in Ward Eight.
Good afternoon, Ernie Ish, representing the applicant. We've read the staff report and concur with the technical evaluation, so be glad to answer your questions, ask for your approval.
No one signed up? Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 15, cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is continued until May the 9th. Item 17 is C- Item sixteen is continuing until May the ninth. Item seventeen is C sixty-four fifty-seven. This is a final plat of Avignay in Ward Four.
My name is Keith Cook with JTK Engineering, thirty-seven nine oh six Wolverine Road, Shawnee, representing the applicant. My client's proposing, or would like to develop an eighty-acre tract on Twenty-Ninth Street east of Anderson Road. Approximately twelve and a half acres is in the Oklahoma City city limits. The remainder, excuse me, is in Midwest City. What my client's proposing is, on the Oklahoma City side, is a minor subdivision with two lots, both being minimum five acres in compliance with AA zoning, with the street going through the middle to access the property to the north, or to the rest of the property to the north. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
What are you gonna do for water?
It'd be well and private septic systems for the two lots. Are you talking about in the Midwest City?
No.
You're talking about the Oklahoma City side? Yes, sir. It'd be private well and septic system.
What do you plan for fire suppression?
Midwest City has a twelve-inch line proposed right along that old railroad driveway, right along the city limits. And there will be fire hydrants spaced every, whatever Midwest City requires, roughly every six hundred feet throughout the Midwest City portion, so there would be a fire hydrant located near these two lots.
I'm no expert. I assume we share those kinds of things, or do we not with adjacent?
We have in the past, yes.
Well, this is my comment, is that you say, and the application said Midwest City proposes to construct a public water line. When? Has that been approved? A bond issued been passed, or is this just in the planning stage?
No, it is on there...
But this is my point, why not just sprinkle the houses, just put automatic, sprinklers in them and be done with it, and that takes care of the entire problem with me?
Okay, I mean, I...
We've been talking about fire suppression, and we've run into all kinds of problems with the developers, with trying to sell houses, and knowing that there's not any really compensation for insurance. In fact, in some cases, insurance companies go up because of fire suppression in residential houses. There is problems with houses on wells. If you have a fire in the garage and you lose your electricity, fire suppression's gone. And, you know, I'm probably one of the biggest advocates of that when we started it, because the way that we were led, and, you know, I have seen some bad things, and also heard some bad things about fire suppression. And as he said, Midwest City has got a line right there, and I bet that within probably fifty to a hundred feet, you've probably got at least two fire plugs. And that, but there's a Midwest City line that runs right in, right in front of this, and I don't know why they can't hook on to Midwest City water, but anyway, you know, I don't know why that couldn't be done.
You need to contract with the water trust, and you need something, I mean, you don't just hook up to another municipality water, you've gotta have...
And there's some, there's some other negotiations going on with another piece of property on Twenty-Ninth Street. And, yes, our councilman, my councilman White, is in negotiation, well, partial negotiations with that, and he okayed me mentioning that, so, and you probably know which piece of property it is, so...
Nick, what's before us today is only two lots on Twenty-Ninth Street with well and septic. We have a lot of AA in this area on well and septic. There are additional problems with sprinkling houses that are on wells. It can be done, but it's much trickier. And for two lots, I don't see the issue. Again, if we were talking about a subdivision out there, it'd be a different deal, but I see Midwest City water for fire flow. I don't think the sprinkling...
I think the only issue, and the only issue we had last time was the traffic problem on Twenty-Ninth Street. But pretty much I think they'd alleviate that with a, with an island, so there's really, there's not really any problem with it that I can see, because that road will furnish as an ingress and ingress to that subdivision to the north, so...
Well, here's my larger question. If Midwest City does in fact have water, its hydrants, and a fire happens in this house, is the Midwest City Fire Department or the Oklahoma City Fire Department gonna refuse to put the fire out because they don't want to hook up to that water?
When we had, when we had the wildfires out there, we had Midwest City on the Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City on the Midwest City...
That's my point.
Dale City and, you know, everybody else, and Tinker was also involved.
Involved, that's kind of my point, so I go for it. Approval of the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve, oh, we have a variance first. Three, yeah. So move. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE three. Cast your votes. Move approval of the application. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Item seventeen's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen is PUD fourteen ninety. It's an application by the SC Bodnar Company to rezone six oh five Southwest one hundred and nineteenth Street from double A Agriculture and R1 Single Family to PUD fourteen ninety, Ward Five.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson and Associates, along with Mr. Paul Odom III, who's the property owner, and we're representing the applicant, the SC Bodnar Company. This is a unique piece of property, as you can see by its strange dimensions, and it's got a significant creek that runs through the middle of it, so we've taken certain design approaches in the process of developing the PUD. This is the site plan. It's changed slightly from the one that you've seen because of the drainage structure and working with how to make a truck, a fire truck turn in here better. We've modified this for this rendering, but it's, you can see it's slightly different. But basically, we've turned the site interior on purpose. We've made the exterior part of the site, the back of the buildings, which are attractive, and I'll show you an image of that. We're gonna retain all the vegetation on the south, on all four sides as we can, but as you can see, this is a fairly significant floodplain area that runs through here, creating some natural area in the middle of the project. We're putting a retention slash detention pond in there, so there'll be water in that pond, trying to make the interior courtyard part of this project very attractive as well. These are uniquely designed units with garages underneath the first floor of the exterior buildings for about fifty percent of the units. I know height is an issue that the staff has had. The exterior buildings are three-story, the two interior buildings are four-story. The necessity to get a certain number of units on attractive land to make it cost-effective is what drives the number of units on this. There are two hundred and forty-one proposed units. Obviously, this part of the property can't be used for the apartments. It would separate them too much, but this is, they're gonna be their office and clubhouse area with parking and landscaping. They anticipate interior walking trails that you can actually, will be able to walk from here back to your apartment and through the creek area, which is very attractive, a lot of old, big, large trees. And as I mentioned, we're gonna try to retain the screening of the natural trees on the sides. We've met with the neighborhood. These neighbors to the south, that was their main concern, that we didn't tear down all the trees. And we've agreed to do that, leave the trees where they are, and in fact bury our fence line to accommodate the trees. So we had a meeting about five or six weeks ago with about twenty-five residents we invited at the South Chertel Church right here, and we had a good meeting. There was not any concern with regard to the height of the buildings. There was some concern with regard to what am I gonna see, what's it gonna look like, and we showed some renderings. There was some concern from the neighbors to the south, I think a couple of them are here today. The east, shoot, can't think of the name of the addition, the addition south, which we have lined our driveway up with their main access into their development on purpose, obviously, for traffic control. We did submit a traffic study on this. The, with this development in place and with the development south of here in place, this intersection operates at a level of service A, and we projected five years, it drops to a B in five years. So that's a fairly good condition. I know the neighbors are concerned about site distance. We have looked into the site distance for this location. Obviously, there's already a drive there, but the, the standards require four hundred and ninety feet for forty miles an hour. We're at six hundred and sixty feet at our shortest ridge, and our longest ridge is fifteen hundred feet. So we feel like we comply with that easily. With regard to the...
Just one, Tim, before you drop down that, that diagram, as I'm looking at the height, the paragraph in the staff report with respect to the height regulation says structure out, so they're restricted to four stories in height or sixty feet or higher for the interior structure, which I'm guessing are, okay, so it includes those?
Just these two buildings right here.
Just the two buildings right, okay, that's one building?
This is one building, this is one building.
Okay, so that west, that west of the creek includes all of those, but that, that last part up there in your northwest corner, I guess the two building...
Other tier.
Other way, other corner.
Four story.
Yeah, that's four stories in the very, very center.
This is four story.
And that is four stories. And that part will abut this undeveloped AA land to the west, right?
I don't know if it's AA to the west.
It's R1.
It's R1.
It's R1? To the west?
Yes.
I was unclear on that from looking at, maybe I've read... That's why I'm getting, wanting to be certain on that. That's pretty tall to abut R1.
This is R1. R1 goes to this line, and that's R3.
And so your location then, as I see the creek kind of running through there, then that, your northwest corner, okay. That's your, okay, and it is AA.
This, this is R1. This is AA right here.
Uh-huh.
And then these three structures that are in the, the old rural area, but it's, obviously, we're surrounded by...
So the property directly west of the R1, if I look at the R1, R3, that's R3, that little strip up there?
It's R3. The little strip is R1. So R1 goes to here.
Oh, I see now.
R3 to here.
Okay.
O2 back here.
Tim, will there have to be a bridge there somewhere?
Yes, we're constructing a bridge across the creek in this location, so R1 drive serves sixty-five units here, and then the remainder of the units will be served off the other drive.
I guess my concern would be that you're, I mean, I know you've tried to, understanding your comment with respect to height, but still, you're gonna have sixty-foot structures next to thirty-five-foot structures, effectively.
I agree with that, except for the fact that I don't think that's ever gonna go R1. I mean, I don't know how you're gonna access it.
Well, that raises that question, yeah, well, and the other three now, okay, but, Tim, who owns that property?
Mr. Odom, the seller of this property also owns this property.
That helps.
Yeah.
Have you done sightline projections from the existing residential to the south? You were saying that they were concerned about what they would be looking at. I mean, have you...
That was these people here, yeah.
Right, and have you actually gone out there and, you know, looked at what they'd be looking at in terms of four stories?
We have, I didn't bring any renderings to that effect. I mean, this, the property obviously falls to the creek here and falls to the creek here, so they're higher here than we are. And what they'll be looking at... This is a, an image of the unit type and style that'll be constructed. This is a three-story unit. And it won't be too much dissimilar to this, because they'll be looking through almost solid foliage. I brought pictures, if you want to see it, of the property lines. It's solid foliage, cedars and trees.
How much, how much of what I'm looking at there is actually going to be visible from those homes, given the tree line and so on?
Probably, maybe the very top floor. Maybe, but I haven't plotted that. Those trees are probably thirty-plus feet high. And this unit would be no greater than, I think, forty-five feet.
And that'll be hardy board, not brick, right? We're not gonna have any...
It's both. It's a mixed, I think we have a mixture of hardy board and brick, and that's their intent. This is colored hardy board in this, hardy board in this image. And it's, you know, we visit with the planning staff about it. It's a, it's a much more architecturally pleasant building. If we did all brick, it would be very institutional looking.
I wasn't suggesting that it be all brick. My question is, is there brick and where is it?
There is brick. The, there are columns that are brick, and there is a brick wainscot that's mixed in here. It's hard to see in this image.
But then the flat surfaces will be hardy board, but they'll be painted to appear like brick, is that what you...
Without painted, they come pre-treated.
Pre-treated, pre-stamped or something?
It's not a, it's not a faux brick. It's a, it's a hardy board plank, so it's, it's just pre-treated color. I think, kind of continuing on with the, the idea of height versus the residential uses, I mean, you can see by the round circles, those are the closest houses. The closest house to our north is nearly four hundred feet away. The school owns this tract of land between the creek and this corner. It would be very difficult for anybody to develop that corner, so, you know, from anybody being close to that, I think it'd be very difficult, because this is gonna be a costly structure to build. And it would be very costly to build for just a few houses.
And, Tim, one more question. You mentioned it earlier, but you did it very quickly. Outline the property Mr. Odom owns, just so I...
This property?
Well, no, you said they own...
Oh, Mr. Odom owns, I'm sorry.
You own the O2? If you come to the microphone, Paul. You'll have to give us your name and address for the record.
Okay.
My name is Paul B. Odom III, twenty-three hundred Southwest Eighty-Ninth, Suite A, Oklahoma City. We have all the property here. To the east is all our property. And to the west, we have, they're buying basically half of the property that we have, and the other half to the west is what I own, which is all from right here up. So we have all of this, and then we have the remainder of this.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a market-driven Class A project. It'll be one of the nicest, if not the nicest, in Oklahoma City. I have architectural approval. I'm very, very, very important to me what goes on next to my property. So it's, it'll be nice, I assure you.
Paul, clarify, you own the property just adjacent to the west?
Yes, yes, west and east.
And east?
And east, yeah. Both, both locations.
Not the, not the little corner there?
Not here, not here, right. We don't own here.
Nor the north part.
We don't own here, but we, but we own, you know, like seventy-five percent of the surrounding properties.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I guess just, trying to continue on here, just to give you a bigger picture, the development, the Greenbrier Development to our south, obviously, it was a mixed-use CUP done many, many years ago. They have apartments, they have some additional commercial and multifamily uses in here as well. You know, the corner's developed, big church, and obviously the school. This, these rural, these three rural houses in here, as these are, were houses that were done many, many, many years ago, probably in the forties. And nothing has ever really developed around them. Even the rural lots that are there were never sold, so... And as I mentioned, we're three hundred and eighty-four feet away from the closest house to our north. The ones to the south, this gentleman runs a shop back there, a mechanic shop, and he just made the comment about... just made the comment about, you know, not wanting to have anybody bother his shop as far as making noise, and he was being funny about it. So I think with, with our discussion about trying to turn the project interior, obviously looking at, you know, what would we do if we were to try and change the elevations? I know the TE on the staff report says conform, conform to the R4 height restrictions, but if, if we were to do that, in order to make this project work, we'd have more buildings, we'd have more rooftops. Turning the project interior gives the exterior of the project the, the better-looking building as opposed to cars parked adjacent. It would give you a little more setback from the building, but we have a considerable amount of setback already built in from the north and the south, just simply by the existence of, and the use of the property. Will the property in our southeast corner or south of us remain AA forever? Probably not. You know, it'll probably develop as residential as the Moore property is to the east. And, you know, if the apartments are there, then whoever buys and develops that property will know the apartments are there, because they'll be there. So we feel like this is a, using the, the higher stories and the lesser roof gives us more room to allow the creek to remain in its natural state. We're not squeezing it in, we're not trying to channelize it, not cutting down trees. And then we're adding the amenity of the pond with some walking trails as part of the development. So with that, we agree with all the other TEs, with the exception of two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we do have someone signed up. Robert Lawrence. If you'd give us your name and address, please.
Okay, Robert Lawrence, 12324 Green Lee Chase East, Oklahoma City. I represent the Eastlake Patio Homeowners Association, which is the property to the south. We have 176 homes, 27 acres of greenbelt, and I'm on the board, and my responsibility is landscaping. That's sufficient. We did attend the meeting. We did express two concerns, which I still, I want to express today. We're not opposing the project. We just want to make sure that we're taken care of. And the first is drainage. They talked about the creek running across. Okay, the creek runs across that property, it goes south on 119th, it runs into Lost Creek, which runs across our property. The creek to the, the other side, everything in that whole section north comes across our property. Everything in this section to the north and east runs across our property. And, and by the way, the city line splits there, and that's been a problem. Half that's Oklahoma, and half of it's Moore, and same thing in this, in this section that I'm talking about. One of my concerns is, the last time I addressed you folks, it had to do with Crystal Gardens, which is just to the east of us. And I came down and listened to the meeting, and I signed up just like I did today, and drainage was not mentioned at all. And I came up and said it needed to be there, and one of you gentlemen said, "Why?" And I said, "It's because your staff says so, it's in your papers." And they looked at them and they were there. And that's been about six or seven years ago. But then they called staff up and they said it, and addressed the issue and said if it was required, it would be there. And because we do have drainage problem. When they built the property, they built, the first section was almost 100 homes in the streets, and there were storm drains, and they built concrete drain clear the edge of our property in two places. And when I questioned why the drains wasn't there, I was told that they did pay in lieu of. Now, I had a real problem with that. You know, I asked them, "What do they do with the money?" And they said, "They put it in account." And like I said, I thought it should have been applied to those who were negatively impacted by your decision, excuse me. But, and so that's the reason we're concerned. And, and we have had significant erosion. One of the drains they dumped in the back of two homeowners' backyard, in which it promptly took out part of it, and we had to put in retaining walls and, and drainage, and, and it was a serious problem for us. And the other part still is. It's taken about 10 feet back in erosion off a creek. And this comes through too. And I just want to say that drainage is a problem, and we want to be sure that adequate drainage is in that area, all right? And of course, they talk about the creek and where it flowed, and like I said, it goes right under 119th, right into our property. That whole section, plus that other section. Okay, and, and that's all that I have to say about drainage. Now, traffic. We have 176 homes, and that is our only exit. Okay? And the 241 apartments that are being built, that will be their only exit. In addition to that, the property just to the east of our entryway is a bank. And you required the bank to have a emergency exit. Well, as they put it in, it turned out to be an interested exit, not an, an emergency exit. And so there's significant traffic from the bank that comes out that way also. Now, the two properties to our east, Crystal Gardens is still building, and the next one is Grace Point, which is in Moore. That's where the dividing line is, just to the east of us. And they have, they have significant number of places being built. And then just to our west, they're developing that also. They're all duplexes, and so the, the amount of traffic, you know, we say it's going to pick up, oh, in the next few years, at least 50%, counting the number of homes that are going to be developed and what traffic is now, or maybe more. And he talked about the blind spot. I don't know about the distance of the blind spot, but I know when I come up to that corner, if you look the other way, by the time you look back, they've topped that hill and are halfway down it. There's a blind spot to the east of us that is a problem. And that certainly should be taken into consideration too. In addition to that, all the poles are on our side. I'm talking about the electric poles, there's two full sets plus light poles. And then OG&E, and I don't know why they allowed that, put a green box right there at the entrance. It's five feet back from the curb, and it's four feet high, and it blocks your vision to the east. I don't know who I should address that to.
OG&E, I would imagine.
Okay. Is there anybody in the city that I should go to also?
Traffic Department. Surely, yeah.
Traffic Management.
Traffic Department, OG&E. And we have had some problems with the bank traffic, and I did address the traffic department and the city police, and they were very cooperative, and they, they were giving us some help in that area. That's the two things that, that we're concerned about for our homeowners association, one of them is safety, and the drains issue. After the problems I mentioned and the water picked up, our homeowners along the creek received notification that they were, will be required to have flood insurance because they were in a flood plain. And they notified the homeowners and their lending companies, and they all had to do that. So I guess they realize it's become a bigger problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, I think we already addressed the, the drainage issue. We intend to have a detention facility that will, that will contain 100% of the increased runoff for all frequency storms, not just the 100, but all frequency storms, which shouldn't allow the property to develop without any increased runoff. And with regard to the traffic, we mentioned the fact that we did provide a traffic study. The signal here is not warranted. If we were to go to Traffic Commission to get one, you know, let's say they approved it, our developer has agreed to pay half of it if the neighborhood would like to pay the other half. But obviously, that, it's not warranted, it's not a requirement of this, of the staff for the zoning case, so. But we did say, and I have told the neighbors that that is something that we're willing to do, so.
Do I recall level of service won't drop below B? Was that?
It will not drop below B in five years.
Okay, thank you.
And that's with the standard, the industry increase of, I think, 3% per year.
Right.
Added, so. Does that answer all your questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, no one else signed up?
I must say that I appreciate the gentleman for bringing me coming back, telling us how, how things are going out there. Doesn't look like much has changed, other than only perhaps worsened, at least in certain circumstances. Not to say, you know, I think the drainage out there is obviously an issue for everybody. I don't, don't, don't know that this particular development is going to make it any worse, but it doesn't seem to be getting any better, at least on a case-by-case basis. And I find that we don't have anything in our report that indicates we've got any drainage issue, Tim. Mr. Odom, very credible here, but seems like on the ground, sometimes these things are a little different. But I appreciate the update, because it is good to know when you, people come back five years later and you see the impact of their development that we approved.
Action, Commissioners? Motion?
I'm just grateful that Mr. Odom has decided that this should be done on this side of the dividing line, rather than putting this on the Moore side. Having said that, knowing he's just the, here as a representative for the applicant, I remove approval of the application deleting TE2.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 18, deleting TE2. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much. Item 19 is being continued until May 9th. Item 20 is PC 10341, application by RSR Properties to rezone 4811 North Portland from R1 single family to O2 general office in Ward 2.
Good afternoon. I'm Travis Mason with Cushman and Wakefield, 100 North Broadway, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I'm representing RSR Properties and Greg Rousch and Smart Lines LLC. The property in question is 4811 North Portland. Smart Lines LLC is a small business, a SAR, in Oklahoma City that purchased 4911 North Portland, updated the property, and currently has its offices there. The business has done well, and it continues to grow, and we've run into an issue primarily with parking. We approached, when considering several options and several alternatives about the city, we decided that home for them is 50th and Portland. They like the area, they think it's a great area, and they, they feel they're part of the neighborhood. So we approached the prop, the property directly north of us, that is zoned O2, and they had no interest in selling. We approached, we approached Michael Seale, who's directly south of us, and asked if he'd consider selling the property. He said he would consider the property, so we put under contract with, under the condition that we get the property zoned O2 for future parking and office expansion for Smart Lines.
Okay, we have three people signed up, Commissioners. We'll hear, we'll hear, Travis, we'll hear from them, and then you can respond.
Thank you.
Debbie Cannon. And since three of you are signed up, I'm going to ask you not to repeat each other. You know, if each of you has additional information, we'd be happy to hear you as we go forward. If you'd pull the microphone down and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name, can you hear me now? My name is Debbie Cannon. I live at 3712 Northwest 48th Circle, which my backyard is right to the building that he was talking about. I'm the second generation in this home. We love the area. We've had some problems with that. Two years, two summers, we fought with skateboarders coming through there, knocking our fences, hitting our fences with the skateboards, knocking them down, graffiti being written on them, vulgar language when I would ask them to please stop. And then I think it was AFWAC that went into that building, and after they went in, a lot of their people would come out and use my backyard as an ashtray. I have five grandchildren. We don't smoke back there, and they play. We have everything set up available for them to have fun. And I did ask, or I put notices on their doors, and asking them to please, you know, use ashtrays and not my yard. Their trash and their dumpster blows in my backyard before I can have the lawn people come and mow my yard. I have to go back and pick up all the trash. It's, it's just a real nuisance. And I, I would like to keep this so that, you know, my son's, the only reason I'm living in the house is because my in-laws passed away. My sons grew up there, and their words were, "Please do not sell the house." So now my husband and I are living there, and we're raising five grandchildren to come over and enjoy like our sons did. And I'm afraid that if we let this expand, then there's just going to be that many more problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Penn?
I'm Michael Penn, and I live in Bush Hills, which is an old, very small enclave, kind of a rural area. Have you all, have you all seen Bush Hills? Are you familiar with it?
Yes.
And we've been fighting encroachment from, from commercial interest for years. And we've, have we have fought this particular one two or three times. I think the last one was in 96. And, which at that time, they wanted to build a restaurant, I think. Their, their realtor that sold Mr. Seale's property testified in front of this body that he, Michael Seale was told that, that the neighborhood would protest turning us into a, into a commercial enterprise. And we've tried to keep it, tried to keep the, the commercial interests out, to keep the noise down, the, the traffic, and adjoining properties. It's a, it's a residential property on the, on the south side, and I think it's all residential on the west side. And we just, we just like to keep it like it is and, and no further encroachment. I think the last encroachment is the, is the office building just to the north of where they proposed this, this particular encroachment. That's all I have. Is there any questions about the encroachment?
I think we understand the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming down. And Earlene Schaffer, or Schaefer, if I mispronounced it.
Hello, I'm Earlene Schaefer, and let me tell you this. I've been here many times before, fighting this very same thing. And once again, I'm here presenting my and our protest for the rezoning of the commercial property located at 4811 North Portland. Our area and the surrounding areas that would be affected, Bush Hills, Treadwell Hills, Lake Crest Edition, the Pate Edition, the Schaefer Eckrodt Edition, we have protested many, many times. I have here two of the, I have a stack of papers about this big from all the protests and the people that have protested. This has gone on for years. This is interesting. Here is a paper that I have that was written in June 5th of 1975. It says, "Each June for several years, the same property has come up for rezoning. This last June, when this came up before the Planning Department and all previous Junes, the members of the Planning Department refused this grant to rezone this business because, as Mayor Patience Lating cited, one more change in that location would completely destroy the residential area, and that it should certainly stop where it is because enough has been destroyed in the residential area already." That is the reason I'm here today. Our goal has not changed. We want our residential area to be protected. We still, and, oh, I do have this, and this is interesting. This is from the paper in 1977, and it says, "For the fifth time in seven years, homeowners living near Portland and 40th Northwest 47th have organized to fight a proposed retail commercial use of the house at 4811 North Portland." The, the Hill houses at that time filed, filed five applications since 1970 to have the single-family dwelling rezoned for commercial use. Each time, both the Planning Commission and the City Council have denied that request." Okay. Today, our, did I, we still do not want 4811 to be rezoned for anything other than what it is, residential. We love the area, we have a wonderful place to live, it's rural in many air, in many ways. In Bush Hills, there are no paved roads or, or no, no curb, just asphalt. Probably that was the reason they was developed so many years ago and before that was required. There are rabbits and squirrels and possums and raccoons, and it's a great place to win. There are rabbits and squirrels and possums and raccoons, and it's a great place to walk. I like to say it's the country in the middle of the city. I remember as a child, we would drive over in the area, and I thought, okay, I'd love to live there someday, and guess what? Later, my husband and I were able to buy a plot of land, we cleared it and developed it into Schaefer Eckrode Edition. Quapa Circle is where I live, it's a cul-de-sac with nine houses, snuggled in on a quiet little street. I still happily live there. I've been there 55 years, one of my neighbors been there 56 years, and another one has been here, been there 65 years. In fact, they moved down there when 50th Street was asphalt, and to come down Quapa Avenue, it was a dirt road, muddy at times. So, you see, we are not, night by night, we are residential, we want to keep it that way. We're very stable, and we're very stable in our protest, and I'm protesting for all five additions, I'm the speaker. In driving north on Portland the other day, I made special effort to notice what a beautiful area it was. Beautiful homes, stately, peaceful, well-maintained, old trees, pretty flowers, great homes on both sides. I thought, what a disaster or tragedy it would be to disturb the beauty with concrete parking lots and business buildings further down Portland. The property at 4811 was built in 1938, this house was, and it's one of the old, stately period, well-maintained homes. It's the house and property that's requesting the rezoning. The letter we received from Mr. Rousch, president of the Smart Lines, which is that building, says, "Our intentions are to develop the property in phases. The first phase would be parking, in the future, additional office building." He concluded, "We are excited about the future and our future as your neighbor." Well, let me say, thank you very much, but no, we don't want your proposed development in our neighborhood. As I understand, that stately old home at 4811, at North Portland, was built in 1938, and it would be demolished to make space for a parking lot. Wouldn't that be a loss to the area? And I have here the letter that I received from the president of, Mr. Rousch. One more, a little bit more. "Any business, our commercial zoning would be detrimental to our property value, would result in increased people, noise, decreased privacy, many, many unstable conditions. We do not want the door opened to rezoning, or future rezoning, of Portland Avenue between 39th and 50th. We do not want to be another Meridian or May Avenue businesses on both sides. Not only saving the property for residential, the businesses that are already there have caused neighbors who back up to those businesses to have encountered some real problems, and you just heard about that. Broken fences, graffiti on some of the walls." And in closing, let me say, many, many protests have been sent in. A large number have been sent to the Planning Commission and the City Council. In visiting with the neighborhood people, one man who apparently has also been through many of these said, "Oh, no, not again." And that's how we felt. That's how a large majority of us felt, and we still feel. We want, we will not stop protesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Travis, we've been holding the line here for 40 years.
Well, I first off would like to thank Debbie, Michael, and Earlene to come voice their concerns, and I got to tell you, Smart Lines thinks the same way they do. To Debbie's point about skateboarders and graffiti, I know those are things that we don't stand for, and I think if you look at the before and after renderings of what we've done with our current property, I think you might say we've improved the area, and we've actually been a good neighbor. And I think we've been responsive, and whatever the neighbors wish, and if there's something of problem, I think we'd probably say we have a pretty good record of that. With regards to Michael's concerns about fighting encroachment for commercial, and I think this leads a little bit into Earlene's comments, I don't think, I would disagree a little bit in the thought that office or commercial development diminishes property value. I actually think there's a lot of cases in Oklahoma City where we'd say office development has improved property value. And I think Smart Lines is someone that does appreciate that country and the city, and does appreciate that area, and that's why they don't want to move. We're not just going to build a parking lot, you know, we believe in green belts, and we believe in all those things that they've discussed. We're not here as a big corporation to, you know, knock down a bunch of trees and just build a big, big, big bunch of pavement. We're here to help to continue to grow, and we believe we are an asset to the neighborhood, in our opinion. So those are kind of me addressing the concerns of Debbie, Michael, and Earlene, and if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to help them.
No reflection, Travis, on your client, or their integrity, or their interest in maintaining property, and we welcome, obviously, successful growing businesses in Oklahoma City. Ironically, within the last couple of years, the property directly to the east was up for rezoning, and Michael Sill's was one of the vocal opponents to that application at the time. And I agree with what was said by some of the protesters, that section of Portland that runs between 39th Street and 50th Street, with the exception of the hard corners, is very attractive, desirable, stable, well-maintained residential. And I'd be surprised if any of us was inclined to encroach and come further south off that corner with office or commercial zoning. Nick?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't here in '75 or '77. I was here-
I was, I just went on the commission.
I was here for two rounds on this site previously, and I thought at the time, the message was conveyed in pretty direct terms, that the line had been drawn. I was also here for multiple rounds further down the street, when a dental lab made several trips before us. Now, again, dental lab's not a bad use, it's low volume, all that, but again, the message was clear, and as you said, Mr. Chairman, we've been holding this line for 40 years, there's a reason for it. I'm surprised that this application is before us, frankly, just because of its history. And I know it's an O2 application, it's not what it was before, but it's also a step and a guise that once I get O2, I might get a restaurant in here too, at the next step. I can't support this application.
Let me make a comment, I agree totally with what you said, Commissioner Gales and Mr. Chairman, but, and I appreciate the arguments. It was an effective argument, but it isn't going to work, for the reasons that Commissioner Gales says, but what we have tried to combat for, since I've been on the commission, is the encroachment on these, what, 23rd Street, 36th Street, all those where somebody has a tax thing, they want to have a, I'll put C1, C2, I want this, it just, it ruins a neighborhood. And I have to say, to you people that live in this neighborhood, the stick-to-it-ness that you've shown to protest any kind of commercial encroachment on this particular piece of property is admirable, and what I would hope, is that, a wish, that in years past, other neighborhood associations had taken the same steps that you have taken to prevent this encroachment of these properties. You had a lovely neighborhood, where, like you said, Mr. Chairman, you have commercial on the corners, but then here's another commercial, another one, all it does, it bleeds into a neighborhood, and it's ruined. So with that, may I move to deny this application?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny item 20. Cast your votes, and it is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not appropriate, but thank you.
Item 21 is SPUD 712, application by Max Heckel to rezon 13100 Colony Point Boulevard, from PUD 570 to SPUD 712, Ward 1.
Members of the commission, my name's Jay Spradling, 1320 Reese Court, Oklahoma City. I'm an attorney, I represent Max Heckel in this application. I have some photos that I'd like to pass out for the record. We agree with all of the TEs, except the one that has to do with the location of the dumpster. As you'll see from the photos, and you probably already know, that there's an existing building on this location. The dumpster location is already set, it's 25 feet from the property line. We've talked to the staff about modifying the 50-foot setback to 25 feet, they agree with that. And if there are any further questions, with that exception or amendment to the TEs, we would just move approval. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes, Jay, would you take out two uses, payday title loan agencies in pawn shops?
Yes.
Okay, let me try this another way. This is a relatively fresh PUD that it's sitting in. It's a C1 PUD, you're asking for C3 because you want to add a couple of things. Could you not add those within the existing PUD and keep that structure? You know, and I don't have the existing PUD for me, but, you know, one of the things we're specifically adding here is the existing murals. I assume those murals are allowed in the existing PUD, but why can't you keep the same PUD and just add your specific uses you want?
Well, the C1 uses do not permit retail, and this building was specifically designed for retail sales. There is a tenant in one of the spaces that is having trouble getting a certificate of occupancy because they are selling items at retail. This was kind of an oversight in the original PUD 570, I think there was an assumption that C1 permitted retail sales, which it does not. So we have to upgrade, basically what we're trying to do is conform the zoning to the building that's been built on the site. There's a restaurant there, sit-down alcohol being served, so we need those types of uses that are permitted in C3 that I don't think are permitted in C1.
Jay, are the murals permitted in the existing PUD? That seemed to be a question I-
Sorry, what?
The murals on the face of the buildings, were they permitted in the PUD, or are they just there, we're now trying to incorporate them?
With the exception of the murals and retail uses, this mirrors the PUD that's there now.
Including-
With the exception of the murals.
Exception of the murals and exception of the uses.
And additional commercial uses.
Well, how did the murals get there, I guess is my question?
Same way, and the retail, the retail structure got there. They were just put in.
So, to answer, I'm sorry, to answer Commissioner Gales' specific question, is it not possible to keep the PUD C1 as a base, but just add murals-
Yes.
And restaurants? We can do that? That would be possible?
You can change the base zoning district back to C1, and then add in the retail uses that they've asked for, and the murals. There are other considerations, however, in the C3 zone, the individual signs for the retail spaces are governed differently than they are under C1, so that we really need to put C3 on a C3-type building, so that each tenant can have a sign. There are certain formulas where in C1, you can't do the signage the same as you can in C3, so what we're really trying to do is trying to make this zoning conform to what the use of the building was designed to be. I think it was kind of mistakenly, C1 was kind of mistakenly selected as the use when there's, you know, existing C3 all up and down the Northwest Highway. So we really need to, in order to make this thing work, from both the city's standpoint and the developer and owner's standpoint, change it from C1 to C3. This being a spud, you can amend the sign regulations to meet the murals that are there with the C1.
Yes, there is kind of that component, that this is a relatively recent PUD that we're dealing with, and this feels a little bit like a shell game, that we did it this way, but now we've decided it's not really what we wanted. I mean, I, people rezon property all the time, I don't mean to say there's anything sort of inherently wrong with that, but it just does feel a little strange.
I agree with everything you're saying, but my other point is, is that you're asking for a 30-foot and a 40-foot LED sign on this property?
Signs are provided for, I think, in the earlier PUD.
Is it already there?
Yes.
So these are the signs that are going to be there, and there's nothing-
You get one or the other, but that's provided for in the original PUD, as I recall.
I believe when we negotiated the original deal, we, or maybe they came back, I don't remember, but we came back and had a special discussion on the windmill thing, to approve that windmill sign.
Right.
But again, all this is fairly fresh, and that's what kind of takes me back on this, is, you know, there was no problem with the zoning when it was originally put in there, there was no problem with the zoning when we heard the amendment or the addition of the sign, and now we're totally changing the character of it. I'm not saying it's necessarily inappropriate, it is on the Northwest Highway. We do have a huge PUD off the highway-
Just west, yeah.
And down a little bit, that we negotiated very carefully, that provides for C3 and signage restrictions. But I'm just frankly a little surprised.
Well, and we gave this some special attention as well.
Well, we gave this one some special attention, and frankly, what I see here is the proverbial bastard child, if you will. You're coming, asking for forgiveness because you didn't play by the rules on the front end.
Is this not a new SPUD? No, I mean, this is a new, it's from this to SPUD 712.
Yes.
So, don't we have a new application?
Oh, absolutely.
And so therefore, these signs that I see here, are they subject to being talked about?
Absolutely.
It's a brand-new SPUD.
Everything is with a new SPUD.
I mean, you wanted to go back to C1, they want C3. I don't want a 40-foot sign. I don't want an LED 40-foot sign out here where there's goat pasture. I don't think, I think it's completely inappropriate. I don't recall when that was approved, Mr. Chairman, when we did this, but I may have been here.
You were here.
While I was asleep. Well, here's- But this is a brand-new deal.
That's not a good thing to say.
This is a new deal, and here's kind of my take, I know Jay has probably talked to just about everybody here, because I think he was doing some diligence work, but at any rate, he and I met and discussed it. If this thing were to come in back in front of us as a C3 application, this is an appropriate location for C3, in my view. It's on the Northwest Expressway, we're giving lip service to serving community retail, and this is community retail, or commercial, fronting up against a big, huge residential area, which we want, keep those folks, have some retail, so they don't have to get out of Northwest Highway. I mean, I think the uses are appropriate. Bob, I do agree with you, and I counseled Jay, and Jay and I had a discussion with respect of the signage. I agree with you on signs, I think that there's virtually no sign pollution out there at this particular point. There is a little bit of a low spot there in the road, it does have some grade issues, but I think that there's some give and take that we ought to engage in with respect to the sign. I think the uses are appropriate and restricted for this particular location, given its location and where it is out there on Northwest Expressway. And I'm somewhat amazed, I guess that the restaurant that's in there got an ABC, because according to our staff report, it's got an ABC. So- So, multiple levels. I mean, somewhere we approved it ABC without underlying any appropriate zoning, I guess, right?
Well, you can do that in C1.
Okay. Well, be it as it may, I think, I'm generally in favor of this, subject to our discussion with respect to the signs, Bob. I agree with you. Yeah, and the uses that you-
The two uses, pawn shops and payday loans.
Right. I agree. So, Bob, what do you think on the sign? Jay, what do you, is your, do you have a view on sign, on what you need?
I do have a view on signs. As you pointed out, and as we discussed-
Right.
-at our meeting, the separation in grade from the Northwest Highway to the site is substantial, and a 15-foot sign is just not going to be seen from the road.
Bob, put your microphone on. I'd like to see the elevation, because I agree with you. We've had this discussion before, particularly, remember on the memorial where we did the negotiation on a 15-foot sign, and they put up a billboard? But we do talk about upgrades and elevations, so if there was this hill, I agree with you to have the sign above the top of the hill.
Bob, we had this discussion on the Northwest Highway in building on the low right at the right-of-way, right here. I mean, we've had this exact discussion.
And so there's a 40-foot sign on this site?
I'm not saying 40 feet. I don't, I don't recall the elevation.
The height is a function not only of the sign itself, but of the wind-generating aspect of it. There's 10 feet above what would normally be considered the sign for the windmill, so to speak, that generates the electricity that powers the sign, kind of a green concept, so that, you know, by-
Great argument. Okay, I agree. Pardon me. Well, I'd like to see, I would like to see more about the signage, because this is, you have come here before us with a new S.P.U.D. I mean, that's where, and I'd like to see exactly what it is you really do need. I object to a 40-foot sign being stuck up on that part of the Northwest Expressway that right now, a lot of it's goat pasture.
Well, now, I'm confused, guys. Help me. The 40-foot sign is not the windmill sign.
No, it's not.
The windmill sign is 30 feet.
Well, right.
Am I correct?
It's not true. The windmill sign looks to me to be 30 feet.
And it's the other-
With the windmill, the sign itself only being 20 feet.
Right, but that's 30 feet.
Or less, actually.
The other sign, what's Exhibit E in here, and the blue sign, as it's labeled, is the 40-foot sign.
Okay. Here's, here's-
That one may be a little too tall.
The red, the red sign, number one, that's the one that you want to have the windmill go around and round and round and power this LED screen.
Well, they, both, both options have windmills at the top, and the one that is 40 feet is the-
Has two.
It's a number-two location. It has two of them. And I have a better, better picture of what the developer and owner would like to have as the sign.
Okay, I think perhaps we should get to the chase here. I don't think we need three windmills out on this property, quite frankly.
No, it's one sign or the other.
Oh, it's either or.
It's either A or B. And let me simplify it a little further. The number-one sign location is in the state of Oklahoma Highway right-of-way. That ain't going to happen. So we're really not talking about two options. We're only talking about one sign location, and that would be roughly, you know, within the, you know, taking into consideration the side triangle and taking into consideration the setback from the right-of-way and so on, it would be roughly in the location shown.
So is this, is this the one sign?
Right, that's the one sign.
And there's no windmill on top of it?
No, there's no windmill on top of that.
This is 25 feet.
I think that sounds like a reasonable compromise.
And if you would agree that this application is restricted to this one sign, I'll go with it. Okay?
I've gotten approval from my client.
That's the sign.
That's the sign.
Okay.
That's why they're leading forward.
Now, Nick, it's your C1, C3 issues.
The C1, C3, to me, is not a major issue.
Jay?
All right, then.
That is part of the-
And we want to say why it's not a major issue.
Jay, I think we're going to want a copy of that for the-
So strenuously.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think I'll make a motion. I'll move, make a motion to approve item 21, deleting payday loans and, what was it?
Pawn shops. Retail sales pawn shops.
And retail sales pawn shop uses, as agreed, limiting to the sign as provided to us by the applicant, 25 feet, no windmill.
Okay, and the TE, 25 feet on the dumpster setback?
Yes.
Okay.
As stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 21, as conditioned with the two uses deleted, 25-foot setback on dumpsters, and the sign as submitted to the commission today. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you, Jay.
Items 22 through 32 have been continued. Item 33 is the public hearing on a resolution amending the Planning Commission's traffic impact analysis policy.
And we need a motion to adopt the policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the policy. Item 34, cast your votes, and that's approved. Planning Commission committees? Planning Commission members? Yes, Janice? I can, I can see your lips moving, you want to talk.
I think I'm going to hold my tongue. We can, we can, we can talk about this later.
Excuse me, where do I get my parking ticket stamped? You see, JJ, do you do this? I want my five bucks back. You do that at the parking garage. Planning Department, Russell?
No, I don't have-
Nothing to do. Development Services?
I actually do have something I want to say about that.
Too late.
There's a, there's a meeting tonight at Westminster School to talk, it's a charrette that's being conducted by the OU placemaking symposium folks about placemaking along Western Avenue. I found out about it last night at 10:18 PM, totally by accident, but nonetheless, it's going on from 2:00 PM this afternoon until 6:00, at which time there'll be a presentation, and then from 6:45 until 8:30, they'll be trying to come to some sorts of conclusions about the level of development that's appropriate along Western and what kind of streetscape accommodations can be made to facilitate that development, and you're all invited.
Development Services, JJ, anything? Municipal councillor? There are no citizens to be heard in any other business? Motion to adjourn. Well done. We're adjourned.